Yes, we don't have any action items unless you were to move something to that. So I did want to take a couple of, take an opportunity to talk about a couple of pretty big items, I think. And so the first one is just taking a look at our partnership with our homeschooling families. Mr. Enderly and I, a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, on a Thursday evening, met with some homeschool families and just really good. Mr. Enderly had initiated that and kind of organized it, but we were really there to listen. It wasn't something we were there presenting or soliciting or anything like that. We just really wanted to listen and just kind of hear from our perspective of our homeschool families, like, you know, what's important to them and what they'd like to see with partnerships. And so really, I want to, I want to leave this up to the board for a discussion because at the end of the day, this isn't something that we would necessarily just bring as administrative team as a, as a recommendation. When you're talking about enrollment and changes to, you know, what we would do with enrollment, even if we were to change how we were going to do boundaries or something like that, like that's really a board initiative. Now, what you may say, you know, kind of at the end of the discussion, whether it's today or another day, is, you know, Mike, I'd like you to go to your administrative team, put together some guidelines, put together some possible scenarios and how we could maybe partner better with our homeschool families and bring that back for discussion and vote, like that's something. But I think really if this is something the board would like to change from a policy standpoint, I really feel like it ought to originate, you know, with the board discussion and board initiative. One of the things I, so I do have a handout and I put this in our public content in the board packet. Just some kind of key points, just to understand where we're at right now with homeschool families and what the participation is. Currently, we have at Ossian two kindergarten students who are homeschooled students, but attending the AM session of kindergarten and then they're going back to homeschool in the afternoon. And part of the rationale is that just, you know, feeling like they were ready or whatever. So I took example, it's not a major hybrid situation, but it is a hybrid situation that we're doing. Lancaster does have one second grade homeschool student that attends for English Language Arts classes, and that's it for the day. At the high school, middle school, we currently don't have any homeschool students participating in programming that I'm aware of and that principals shared with me. One of the big items that we talked about in our, in our parent meeting was participation in extracurricular events, and namely in our interscholastic sports. IHSA requires homeschool students to attend and pass one class at their resident school and to participate in interscholastic, interscholastic sports. That was something came out in 2013. When we, when we met with parents on that evening, I think there was some confusion and quite honestly, like I hadn't dug back into it, I hadn't really remembered. I was an elementary principal and that decision kind of came to be. And so I really hadn't thought about it, kind of the timeline on it, but it was actually in 2013 that they changed that or had that be one class that you needed to pass. I don't, honestly, I don't know what Norwell was doing then with it. And when I came in to Norwell in, in the summer of 2020, I know it had kind of been part of the conversation, but at that time, I believe, unless we changed it kind of as I was coming in, honestly, I don't remember, but Norwell had it as that you have to take and pass five classes. And so we were quite a bit higher than what the, the minimum is for IHSA requirement. And I think when you look around the area, I think we're one of the lone that have it that high. I think a lot are, are just doing the minimum of, of one class. Now, different, some schools are block scheduled, right? So there's some differences there. Then other things that we have, I know Lancaster has invites homeschool families to participate in like some family nights and look fair, so there's some outreach there. But yeah, again, I think the question for the board, and I think it honestly is a more pragmatic question because I think the, the easy one is you're either all in or all out, right? So that's one solution to the, to the, to the participation in our programming. You know, another one is thinking in terms of, you know, we're all part of the Norwell community in terms of all our residents that live here, what are some opportunities for partnership? I think that's the discussion. And so anyway, I'll just leave it to you guys. And I know it'd be hard for you to believe, but I'm really not going to say much here unless you ask me to. I'll just leave it to you guys to talk about.
Are there, are there, I know there, you indicated that they, we don't have any students participating in Norwell programming. Do we have any participating in Norwell extracurriculars that are, so obviously not if they're not doing the five.
Right, right. I don't think we do now. We have had that. I mean, I know we've had kids come participate in wrestling or whatever it might be, but I don't know that we have. Maybe you guys would know if you come up to podium and share, but I don't think, I don't think we do this year. And I also think from our meeting, there was some confusion as to whether, because in our handbook, we now have it combined for high school and middle school. And so if you're not following that and you get kind of confused, it'll say five for the high school, but for the middle school, it actually has state one. But I think there's even been some confusion in talking with parents that it's five. Because I remember, that part I do remember when I came in in 2020, some discussion within the board about should we be the same between the middle school and the high school? But, but I don't remember ever seeing a change. I don't see a handbook that actually changed it to the middle school being five. So middle school, I think for a long time has remained one, but I'm not sure all parents know that. So I don't think we have any, anybody participating right now.
So Mike, let me ask you this question.
Yeah.
So when we build baseball stadiums, like the theater and stuff, where do those funds come from?
Yeah, so we talked about that at the meeting. So this is where it can kind of get confusing if you're not familiar with school funding. But the property tax portion of it, which is every resident, right, is contributing property tax. That's for all the, the facility upkeep, the maintenance, the central office staffing, the custodial maintenance staffing, all of that is through-
Transportation, right?
Transportation, that's all property tax. Which, which homeschool families would be contributing to that, right?
Correct, and that's, that's what I'm kind of leading on.
Right. The edge, the one little difference with it, but again, it's a difference in, you have to really break down the numbers, is education funding, and that is based on enrollment. And so that's where you get into a full enrollment. So right now, it's about $6,900 per student that we get, per student that attends Norwell at a full-time rate. We can, like, so if you do come though for a portion of the day, if you come for one class, we would be, so whatever that would be, like one sixth or one seventh or whatever it would be, you can count it for that portion of the day towards your A D.
So there is a revenue.
So there is a revenue component to the education fund, right?
If they are participating in-
Right, and so, and then just to remind people, so education fund, that is for programming, for teaching staff, all of that. So whereas, so if there wasn't any contribution to that at all, and you get, then you get into, okay, what's proportionate? And I think that gets really messy. But, but if it was just property tax, it wouldn't necessarily be paying for the coach, right? Or paying for the, for the teacher, even though we do transfer money from education fund to operation. But there is that whole thing that happens too. So that's where it gets a little bit confusing. But, um, but yeah, there is a portion, if you participate, whatever portion you participate, we do get a portion out of an A D.
So, so the homeschool kids, if they come to the school and we get a, there'll be a portion for the classes they take. And then there'll be, and then there'll also be the fact that they're within our area, so they're obviously paying taxes.
Right.
And that goes into our operating, that goes into operations fund, was paid for the extracurriculars.
The facilities and things, right.
So, I mean, that's kind of where, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, so play a scenario where it's the downside of this.
Where the downside is?
Yeah, give me a scenario where it's, it's a downside of not allowing them to participate.
I can answer that, or if you guys want to.
Anybody want to give me a downside? Go ahead.
Am I Debbie Downer?
I want you to be the Debbie Downer.
No, I, I don't know that it's necessarily a downside. I just think it gets a little bit tricky in where, you know, our students, our current students, athletes, participants are expected on the day of an event to be present for four periods of the day. Well, if, if these homeschool students are only required to be there for one period of a day, I don't want to say is that fair, but is that fair, you know, to the other students? What's the balance? You know, then we get into E C A code of conduct and what that looks like.
Academic requirements.
And who monitors that?
Is the one class, does it need to be a class, do they have to be enrolled in the class all year long? Or is it like one semester that counts for the year?
I'm all that too.
Right, so-
Does it need to be a-
I think that's kind of what, right, we're talking out loud, we're, there's, it's for you to kind of come back with a proposal based off of some of the things that are-
What is IHSA require, what's there one class?
Right, so participating, you have to be in accredited, full accredited class. And so like, for example, there's a school around, there's a block schedule. So really, it would almost be the equivalent there of the time of two classes compared to us because they're, they're double blocks. But you'd have to be taking that full class. Now, it has to be during the time that you're competing. So technically, you know, could you compete within that season, as soon as the season's over, quit the class and just leave, right?
Right.
Now, I don't see that happening, right? So I mean, I think someone that would start would finish the semester because that's going to be on your transcript, right, that you didn't, you know, finish your class. I mean, you have to finish it, I guess, you could withdraw, I guess, and go to homeschool at that point for that class. But I don't, I mean, I think those are kind of scenarios. So to Chad's point, you know, I think the first step, and I don't know, I mean, we're not, you're not really on it today, and I don't even know that you need to come to consensus even today, just in thought. But I think once you kind of get through that philosophical point, like what's the, just as a community, like, you know, and that's kind of, that's also part of the question, I think, that you're asking Todd, like what's the, what's the upside to it as a community?
So financially, we, we realize it's, there's nothing financially, I think, wrong with it.
No, no, schools do.
So it's not financials. So we're really kind of on the participation and what you brought up with the students being there for four periods to participate in that activity.
Expectation difference.
Right, and I think those kind of details, so I think that's where I think you get into the, the pragmatic part of it, right? What do we think just in terms of kids that, that are in our community? And, you know, and knowing that schools changed a lot from, you know, when this was maybe even first talked about. And, you know, now we have kids, you know, there's, there's virtual, there's, you know, there's combinations and stuff. We talked about if we have kids that want to take Japanese, or like two or three kids that want to take Japanese, well, we're not going to hire a full-time Japanese teacher, probably even do a halftime because of benefits and everything. But could we do something creative where we livestream into another school that offers Japanese? And, you know, our kids are in a super, you know, they're in a room like in our, in our media center or something like that, and they're taking that class virtually. So I guess my point there is that, that school is really differently to, to kids now than it would have 20 years ago. There's, there's different options. So I think that's kind of the first hurdle, is just that whole wrapping your head around the idea, can we be all things to all people? And can we want to try to do that? That ought to be our goal. So I think that's the first thing. Then I think once you cross that and make that decision, then I think what would be the job administratively is to go through and say, okay, what are some guidelines, structures that we would put into this? Getting to that kind of those points. And is that antiquated, that, you know, for kids, is that more of a coaching thing that you, you know, for kids having to be there for four, you know, periods before they, you know, to compete? Or they have to be there, they have to come in the afternoon or whatever, like those rules? And again, I really don't want to talk this much, but just to give you guys kind of some scenarios to think about in this. You know, one of the things that we talked about administratively is just, just even with our kids that are enrolled full-time, is like family excuse vacations and things like that. You know, there was a school thought that, you know, we just don't allow that, like you can't miss, you know, school for vacation or whatever. And so the conversation we had within our administrative team is like, well, wait a second here. So if we have a student that great attendance, you know, 95 to perfect attendance, ace in all their classes, are doing really well in all their classes, and is going to get their work done ahead of time, and their family has an opportunity because of how their schedule lines up to go on vacation in the middle of October or whenever, that's probably a bad example. But at some time when we're having class, what, I mean, what's wrong with that, right? Now, I think, you know, but so we did, we did some guidelines, I can remember in the handbook, that if someone doesn't have really good attendance, or they're struggling or whatever, and we, then, yeah, no, we're probably not going to approve that. That would be an unexcused absence because you've already missed too many, you already have unexcused absences. I think there needs to be some, look at that. So the reason I bring that up is I think that's maybe a lens to look at a lot of the rules maybe schools have had for years. You know, is it time to relook at some of those? And is that more of a, the fairness issue, is that more of the kind of the program with the coach and how they balance that?
And really, the, the gist of this is not so much like, you know, students just participating in one class or two classes or three classes. It really comes down to the extracurricular activity participation if they were to come in. And do we change that? Not that we don't accept homeschool students for one class, two classes, three classes, whatever. But it's, it's if they want to participate in extracurricular activities, that's the, that's where we have to figure out.
There is that, but just, just to kind of speak for the group a little bit that we met with, I don't know that it always feels real inviting and real welcoming and, and so, and again, not because we have meeting people, that's not how I view that at all, because we don't. But just as a spirit there of, truly, which is why we wanted to title this on the, on the agenda, that it's really about partnership with homeschool families. Like what does that look like? If we were to have a better partnership, what would it look like?
I do think that there's a real opportunity, given the growth in our C T E programming, but that, that more homeschool students could jump in and create, and into those opportunities. But yeah, and I think that's why I wondered, is it just about extracurriculars? Are we talking about a true partnership and, you know, how do we?
To say, C T Es is a different conversation than extracurricular, in my opinion.
Right.
Right.
So I think, I think everybody's kind of the same thing. Me personally, I mean, most, if you're homeschooling your kids, most of these people, their kids are going to be up at school doing their thing. I mean, I'm not really, you know, I understand the four classes and stuff, but I just don't see that in a homeschool, they're going to be like, yeah, Johnny sleep in. I don't think that's going on at all. So I just think that they're going to be, that's, I guess that's my concern, I just don't want to, like you said though, it's the fairness of it, and that's just the only concern, and I understand that.
Is there, does the IHSA dictate, does it have to be a particular class? I mean, does it, it doesn't have to be a core class, it can be an elective?
Yeah, we, we can set up whatever guidelines we want, no, they don't.
Okay.
Because like, do they take us fall course and then participate in the spring? Is that, I guess it's all-
Like they have to participate?
Do they have to be in school during the, okay.
During that season. But that's where I was saying, like, could you, I don't know, I suppose you could, like if you, if you were, say, a football player and you took classes in the fall, because our classes are one semester classes. And so if you took a semester class, fall semester class, participated in football and didn't take a class in the spring, because you're not doing a sport in that spring, yeah, I mean, I think you could probably do that. I don't know. But again, do we?
But do we set a guideline that says you have to have that?
Yeah, or, yeah, or not, I mean, I-
That's, that's for a discussion, right? That's for you guys.
And I will say, just, just because you had said this, just to kind of, because I told the families that were there, I told them that we were going to be talking about this today. And I said, you're welcome to come, and if you want to speak, you can, and I'm going to try to share, you share it with me. And so just on that note, I would say, you know, I would say the participation in athletics was, was, yeah, it was probably 90% of the conversation or 85, right? But I, but there were other pieces to it, and even like at elementary, because the elementary people that were there, I mean, obviously, we're not, we don't have interscholastic in elementary, and it was still kind of an issue for them. And I think one of the things that kind of sad me as a, as a longtime elementary principal was just the feeling that, and some of it was kind of COVID and that it just kind of continued, that not really feeling welcome, right? At the, used to volunteer a lot in, in schools and elementary and kind of don't feel like those opportunities are there anymore. And again, blame doesn't matter on any of that stuff, right? It's just, but the feeling that, or the fact that that's a perception or feeling, you know, bothers me as a superintendent, but it really bothers me as an elementary principal that that was our lifeblood, I mean, that was every day, right? I mean, you just, you had parents in and out of your doors all day long. And so, so again, whether, whether it's fact or not fact, the fact that it's a perception, I think, is a concern. And so I think that's why, that's also, I think, in the spirit of this, you know, how do you increase that partnership?
Do we want to open it up to public?
Yeah.
I think we have to, because I would like, I mean-
No, no, I'm not, I'm saying, is there any more?
Oh, well, yeah.
No, I tend to open it.
Yeah. Okay, can we go back? I have one more financial question. So, because I don't understand all of this yet. I know we can get funding for them attending even for just one period. Do they have to be enrolled at the beginning of the school year in order to get that funding? How does that work? Because I know there's like some cutoff dates and things like that.
We have two cutoff dates. We have August, or October 1st and then February 1st, those are our two count days.
Okay.
So as long as you're enrolled by those days.
Okay, okay.
And they would, in my opinion, this is, you know, they, they would have to be for a full semester. Where it gets difficult is if they wanted to participate in a winter sport, which runs across both semesters, which means they would need to be essentially there throughout the entire school year. But that's for you guys to figure that out.
Right, right, right.
Because then they would miss potential count days. I mean, they would miss, depending on the season, they could miss a count day.
Okay.
Ready for public?
Yeah.
Okay, so if there are any members of the public who would like to come up and speak in regards to this topic, you will need to come to the e-podium and identify yourself. Anybody wishing to speak?
I'll come up, just in case. If you have any questions, I'm not really, I don't really care to speak, but I figure somebody should. My name is Jessica Bender. Need my address, is that true?
Nope, we got it.
Okay. So yeah, so I have kids in both. Currently, we are sending my daughter Grace to middle school, she's a sixth grader. She's done at Gilley. So she just told me today she got a perfect score on her I D. And I'm like, yes. So, and then I still have my younger two, fourth grade and second grade at home. We started our homeschooling because of COVID, which I think is like, when we were at the meeting the other night, that was the majority of us. We had started, COVID just made life really difficult. And I had a kid at home with breathing issues. And our pediatrician said, if you don't want to send him to school, please don't until we figure out what this is and what it looks like and how it's going to affect kids with breathing issues. So I didn't. And then it just worked for us. My husband travels a lot with work, and so it's like, oh, well, we're going down to Alabama for a week. And it's really cool. We went down to Alabama, went to Montgomery, excuse me, and we got to see where, you know, Rosa Parks was arrested, where she was jailed. It was the birthplace of slavery. They had more slaves in Montgomery, Alabama than anywhere else in the United States. And we got to go and immerse ourselves in this for like four days, and it was amazing. And my kids learned so much. And so it's things like that that really keep me homeschooling, keep, like, I get to see, not only as a parent do I get to see the worst of them, as we all do when our kids come home and they're tired and, you know, hangry, but I also get to see the best of them. You know, I get to see when they master their multiplication twelves because they haven't been able to get it and it clicks, right? I taught my kids to read, and they're fabulous, like fabulous readers. So I get all of that in elementary school, and that's, that was really, really important to me. And I think as you go and start talking to homeschool families throughout our district, that those are a lot of things that are important to them. They value, especially when their kids are young, they value that, you know, those early years, they're just only young ones. And so those things, I know that we did talk a lot about, you know, the C T Es, but again, we just, I think, want to feel involved in the community. And again, I, you know, I spoke to Mr. Springer, but it is a very cold feeling as a homeschool parent that you get from the district. And it's very odd because as a middle school parent, it's very warm and inviting and, you know, I'm in the building whenever I can be, trying to help out with things and learn of her teachers and all the stuff. But as a homeschool family, you're very ostracized. So yeah, that's kind of our story, but I just didn't know if you had any questions for a homeschool parent and volunteer myself.
I don't have anything direct. I, I mean, I think, I want to thank you for the time that you spent and hope that you will continue to, as we develop out what this looks like and some suggestions on how we become more warm and inviting to homeschool families, I think, you know, we want to be, and it's sad to hear we aren't. And so, so hopefully, as we continue to move forward, we can figure out how we can be more warm and we can be more inviting and, you know, it's not going to be an overnight solution. I think we all know that, know that, and even when we come to some agreements on some, but some, you know, processes, even from the extracurriculars, it's not going to be an overnight change. You know, we know it's going to take some time before people feel that, you know, more welcoming, but hope that you'll continue the conversations and continue the involvement to be able to help us as a district to get more involved with homeschool.
Yep.
Do you have a question, if you guys have mine? It's like at elementary, I don't know if we really had time to really get into this the other night, but if, as an elementary parent, if you were to have like a hybrid situation or you were to, you know, participate in some things at elementary, what would that, what do you think that would look like for a lot of elementary families?
I don't know. I think, I think elementary is kind of its own thing. And I think a lot of people homeschool during elementary because their kids are so young and they want to keep them home longer. I know some kids, some families keep their kids home because their kid may have, you know, need reading help and they're not feeling like they're getting as much reading help as what they should be in the elementary level, is what I've heard from some families.
Right, I just said if they were going to take, if they were going to be involved in something elementary like, you know, what?
I mean, even things like-
We don't have C T B, we don't have, you know-
Yeah, but even the things like the cross-country races.
Oh, I see.
You know, the elementary cross-country races, or chess club after school.
Right, right, okay.
Or any of those extra things, just, you know, just reaching out, I think, to the community and getting those extra kids. And I think too, that once families start seeing those extra benefits that our district offers, that it's not going to be like a, oh, well, I really only want to keep my kid here for one, you know, one semester and then after the athletics is over, then pull him out. I don't think that's ever going to be the case. I think they'll really, you know, see what we offer and then be like, oh, wow, you know, I really like that.
So the biggest thing about school, and I think people tell you that it's really about the social aspect. And so what I, I think that's why so many parents are looking at the extracurriculars is because they want their kids to be socialized with other kids in the community. Is that a fair statement? Is that really where we're, we're going with this?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it is to a certain extent, but homeschooling has developed and changed so much, especially since COVID. I'm the assistant director of our, one of our co-ops in Bluffton, and we meet every Friday. We have 142 kids in our co-op alone, kindergarten through seniors and high school. There are four homeschool co-ops that I know of in Wells County.
Really?
We are one of four. We meet every single Friday, we have great attendance. And so I think the, the social aspect used to be this huge like faux pas, right? You would hear homeschoolers are not very socialized. Again, my kids are in soccer and 4H and volleyball and basketball and, you know, all the things, they're plenty socialized. They go to the co-ops. So I don't know that that's it.
I know homeschool used to be just at homeschool.
Yes.
And it's not so much anymore. It's almost a private school, but yet identified as homeschooling. So I know that that, there's two components of homeschooling, right? It is just staying home and you only ever stay home to, to teach your child or you go to the co-op and you have multiple students, it's almost like a school setting, but yet it's not that homeschool, you know, so.
I will tell you, we were listening to an audio book and there was a homeschool kid in the audio book. And the students, other, she, she went to middle school. And the other student said, what do you do at homeschool? You stay home all day? And my kids go, we are never home all day. I'm like, no, there's this misconception about homeschoolers that they just hibernate in their home and, you know.
There's not really a homeschool anymore.
It's not really, it's really not.
So, yeah, and I think, you know, the fact that you say there are, you know, at least four, I think it is important not only for us to get out to them, but them to get to us, to again, be more involved. I know in my previous role, I tried to involve homeschool in some of our manufacturing day things, and I couldn't find contacts for anybody. And so it's, it kind of is one of those, like, I think we want to be inviting, but it's also hard to even invite because we don't know who to invite, we don't know who to contact. And so I think there's opportunities on both sides, and I think, you know, moving forward, I hope we can work on that together. That's a very good point.
Yeah, Andrew, he, he talked about that a little bit the other night, yeah.
So just in case people aren't aware, what brought this conversation up to begin with?
Yeah, I don't really remember who exactly at this point, but it had reached out to the district. And I think it, you know, basically they got to me and, and I believe it was a middle school parent, so I reached out to Andrew and said, you know, to talk about programming, because they were talking about how could we- So I reached out to Andrew and said, you know, to talk about programming because they were talking about how could we participate? So I set them up with Andrew, started that conversation. And then he reached out to me and talked kind of how it went and stuff. And then kind of together we just thought, well, let's do a night and let's just, let's listen to people and whatever. So, so then Andrew organized all that and got the word out. So that's kind of what started it. So maybe it was by somebody reached out.
Okay. I think there was, I think there was a misconception that we initiated the conversation and that we were trying to get money.
Yeah, right.
And, and I don't think that's it at all.
No, it was, it really started, you know, pretty simply that apparently, you know, how could we, what are the opportunities at the, at the middle school, I think, is kind of, I'd have to go back and email whatever it was, but that started it. So then I just, yeah, I asked Andrew to reach out to these families or whatever it was to, I don't know if it was one of the families. And that's what started it. And I would say just, I was thinking about that kind of along with what you're saying. I mean, you know, just listening to this and talking, you know, it seems kind of a little bit oxymoron or whatever as a school to be talking about, you know, the opportunities that are out there for homeschool because it is. I mean, there's, there's benefits, right? And we recognize that depending on what your family situation is. That's where again, I go back to talking about it being more of a philosophical thing because we talked about this at our meeting, like, we have to base our, our budgets and stuff on predicting what our funding is going to be, right? That's just, otherwise we're just throwing a dart at the wall and deciding, you know, what, we're going to set up a budget each year. So you kind of have that predictability. But at the end of the day, like, I mean, that shouldn't be what drives what we do. Thinking of kids as just in families and just as a, as a monetary figure and we don't. I mean, we sometimes it comes out that way when we're talking because that's how we build our budgets. But it just, it really just has to be, and then again, and I don't think you attract people that way as, as a school, right? I think you attract people by, and we, we want, and I said this the other night, like, we honestly want every student that lives within the Norwell district to come to our schools. I mean, we just do because we feel like we have a lot of good things going on. We feel like we can, we want to make the most out of their experience while they're in school and we believe that. So we want that. I always wanted that as an elementary principal, like I wanted kids to, to come to our school and have the best experience they could have at any possible school in Indiana. But that, you know, that being said, that, that's how we ought to be driven by. But the fact of the matter is there's, there's, there's different families with different needs. And, and I just think we need to think differently. We need to think about if we're truly going to try to be all things to all people, not everybody fits into the same box that we think of sometimes in school overall. And that's the reality of it.
And, and as Todd indicated, I mean, there's still taxpayers in our community and, and, you know, they're, they're paying taxes. They should be able to have access to our community, those, those things that they pay for. So does anybody have anything further for Jessica so she can sit down?
Just appreciate her standing up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
I would. I'm going to have, it'll be just.
Well.
Still got to sign your name.
You can put my name on.
Want this to take the whole time?
Give all the time. It's okay.
So my name's Jeff Moser. Lived in Adams, grew up in Adams County, graduated from Adams Center High School in 1996. I think we probably did battle on the basketball court a few times.
Maybe, maybe not.
Where did, what, what year did you graduate?
Ninety-seven.
Okay, yeah. Well, your name was from there anyway, so. Anyway, so we, my wife is from Illinois. We, we moved back to this area. I say back, we never, we never did live in this area since we got married. We, we always lived away and we have seven children from age five to 16. So we've been, we've been homeschooling all along. And, and as you heard, every, people have different reasons. I think it's ours, ours wasn't because of COVID. We had, nor was it to keep our children from other children. We had a lot, a lot of social things going on. You, you did mention, a couple of things were mentioned. Does it come, you know, come down to some socialization? I, I for one missed that a lot, that, you know, from, from that perspective. But my wife, I mean, our, our kids are getting a, a, a good education. For my wife, she does an excellent job. But, but, you know, we have children in high school now and some of it is, is opportunity. We live in the community and, and without, you know, we don't have the, the opportunities to be in those extra crazy. We, we do, they're, they're just now prevalent a lot in the community. And so, you know, we view, we hope, we hope the high, um, community schools are viewed as, you know, to be a benefit for the, for, for the entire community. As far as that, those dollars go, appreciate that conversation. You know, we, we don't have the option to not, not pay our property taxes, but, but it's our decision to be homeschooling. I'm not putting that on you guys at all. It's just, we're going to be paying property taxes regardless. I don't think there's a question of fairness or, you know, hey, this is some, some sort of drawback there. And then, what else was I going to say? The, the, the point you brought up, we, we have encountered that a lot as far as fair, you know, the, the, is this fair? I, I could see that being, I mean, we, we have had some experiences, just so you know, you know, what to get into. But by, by being more welcoming, I don't think it completely opens the floodgates. Oh, I'm going to be overwhelmed by homeschool students in here and, but, but you, you, you do need to prepare for what, what that could bring, you know, because, you know, you get into a little bit higher, you know, the girls' basketball team standing up here and if you got a homeschool, you know, student in there competing for one of those spots, it, it can bring some challenges. If, you know, somebody takes Johnny's spot on the team. So we, we have encountered that. We've had schools accept us as homeschool students until, you know, you get a little bit of friction there. And, and, and then, you know, the, the scenario can change pretty fast if somebody's in, in your ear on that. So it's, it's unfortunate. I mean, I think it's, if you live in a world that, you know, they, they have an opportunity to compete and the best players are playing, but it doesn't always work that way. So we, we've got some boys, five boys. They're, they're very competitive. They play in, you know, high level sports currently. And so I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying it's, it's, they'll, you know, I, I think sometimes there's that, that, that by adopting maybe one class, it's just there's, there's more maybe to consider as far as what you might, might get into with that.
Yeah, I, I would just ask too, it's like, in the younger years, there is some opportunities with volleyball or things like that, but they're typically not super competitive. But then when you get to high school, you know, the opportunity to do any local sports, there's only one option, you know, and that's only through the public schools. And then on top of that, you know, you know, if you're a homeschool student, you don't have school of choice. So we can't go to Bluffton and say like, hey, you have a one school student policy, you know, one class policy, can we come to you? Because you only can play for your district. So, so as a homeschool family, we're only bound by, you know, the district that we live in. So that's the only opportunity. So we also, even like last year, our boys played, fifth and sixth grader boys played Bluffton football with them. And then, you know, once you get to sixth grade, you're like, well, I guess your, your football opportunity is done, you know, like.
So school choice options don't apply to, you know, so.
You can't do the transfer?
You can't do a homeschooling. And, and that, that has changed. I think initially I would say Bluffton probably wasn't aware of all these IHSA policies, but the policy says, and I talked to IHSA about it and they're like, oh no, you have to be in your district, only your district. That's all you can do. So you kind of have your hands tied when it comes, especially playing competitive athletics unless you're going to play club ball, which people say, we have a lot of kids, it's very expensive and we also feel like we're not going to be chasing everything on Sundays. We're not going to miss church to go play basketball. So that's how we've been out. And so our choices are pretty much, you know, try to figure out a way to, to get, so we are currently playing on multiple teams in Portland, which has been great. Honestly, surprisingly, we didn't know that that option existed, but it's a ton. It is a ton of driving and there's no way we would, you know, build to do football or golf or any, anything else. It's pretty much like basketball's your only lane. So that's, I think that's the situation. I will say also about the four, I think like the, in our, in our past, some of the places we've been, you know, they required us to hand in, I think that was a discussion we have like, well, how, if a student has to be passing five classes, what about a homeschool student? You know, we, we had to hand in grades like any other teacher. And I think the discussion was like, you know, any child, any parent is going to lie for their kid. They're not, I mean, hopefully that's not the case. And if it is, you're not doing your kid a favor. You know, same with the point to like, well, my kid may be at class for one, you know, class period, but I'm certainly not letting him sleep in at home for the rest of the day. Or, you know, I'm like, I'm happy to hold up the, you know, curriculum that my kids are at sex and viewing at.
Is the, is the five class requirement currently an impediment to?
It's, it's, it's basically saying, you know, I mean, you couldn't do it five, five class. Oh, five classes at, at normal high school is basically saying.
For, for you, 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 five is too much for you to consider for your children to be participating in extracurriculars?
We specifically like.
You would like to see that change.
We're waiting to try to find a house because like, we don't want to move to Normal District because that will cut out the chances, you know, to play high school athletics, to be honest. And we can't leave that body, you know, we end up being like, we got to move somewhere.
I just wanted to, you know, so, so you're essentially indicating you would like to see the five change?
Yes. Yeah, you were probably confusing, but I think your point is changing it, there are some complications that do arise. And if you don't actually, if you, it is, it can become a bit of a.
It, it, it creates a little bit of a challenge because we are in this, in a, in a pretty good league now. And we've already put our children through some things where, you know, if we change that and a board isn't committed to that decision because there, there likely will be issues. I'm not going to have my sons go one more year only to, ah, they changed it back.
Right, right.
Well, it's true. We had to, we had to keep jumping, you know, you could pray for, play for a Christian school for like two years, but then once, this is in Illinois, but then once you hit seventh grade, you gotta, you couldn't play for them anymore. So then you had to go try to figure out, you'd be at the public school to play for you and then, you know, the tier and then it was trying to figure out, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I mean, I would say like, you know, I, that's why I think we, we have to make sure that we are doing what's right for our district and our community. I would like, if, if this is not a next meeting decision, I think there's going to be some time that, you know, and if it's five months, six months, you know, great, it might be a year. I hope it doesn't take that long. You know, hopefully by the next school year, it can be figured out. But again, as I educated in the evening, you know, I would encourage, as we're working through this for you guys, for to, to be involved and providing your input and some thought around how that helps and, and, and understanding the fairness level as well.
I think, I think we definitely need to be for the next school year and maybe even.
Well, I would hope so.
Before that because.
I didn't even email you guys. I can't remember when you responded back to me. One of the things that we, we got everybody's emails, so, so I encouraged if there were people weren't there to kind of send it by. I promised if we would do a follow-up, I wanted to have this meeting first and to reach out. But I kind of, you know, as a timeline, I think, and kind of what I feel like I'm hearing from the board is, let's go back to our administrative team, let's put some things together and then bring it back. So I could see us, you know, bringing back maybe some ideas, continue the conversation on the eight. I don't know if April 22nd is too quick to come to the decision, but definitely I would think in May, you know, could be a thing depending on what we bring back to the, to the board and where the board's at with that. But I, I do think that's again, just going to like to just, I like the idea that this is a community conversation. This is about, again, more philosophical, people with, all the families that live in our district. How do we partner and reach out to all families? I think that's the, the basis of it. And then as we set up some guidelines, things again, I, I think even the guidelines can't, you know, have them flow every year so dramatically. I mean, it needs to be, but there could be some tweaking like we do with other handbook stuff. But I think the core of it needs to be pretty like, you know, how many, what's the participation, what's the requirement? That kind of stuff should be pretty solid. But then I think as we tweak some other things, I think that makes sense. But yeah, I'm happy to, to work with our team. I think we can put together some guidelines. I mean, we can piggyback on some of what other people have done. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, but there might be some unique things that will.
We get, can, you know, because this is my thought process is comes June, these kids are already starting to play summer basketball.
Right.
And they're starting to play football once in July. And so, you know, we can't wait till the school year.
Right.
Because, you know, that's another year they miss. So I, I mean, I, my personal thought is, is we got to figure out, I, I guess it would be, we probably need it done by May so that they could see it before the school year.
I would say we'll be diligent yet thoughtful. And I think that's what needs to be important. I mean, I would like to see it done as quickly as possible too, but I don't want to make rash decisions that result in changes. Let's, let's be thoughtful, but let's be diligent.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah, yeah, you don't.
That's true.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
You can not come clean and see.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, move on from that discussion then.
I did discussion. I don't know that this will go as long maybe, but I didn't want to just kind of touch base. So you saw there kind of in this, there's actually more writing that's necessary. And just, you know, we want to continue the conversation we started, I think in January, right? About looking at operational costs and knowing that however Senate Bill one shakes out and how, whatever the governor's, you know, final, you know, budget looks like, there is going to be a loss in our operations fund. I mean, there just is going to be, and there is going to, going to be property tax relief in the end, I think, for families. And so again, not, and not arguing against that, we respect that that's, you know, necessary, I think, for our families. So, but as we're looking at that, one of the things that we wanted to kind of investigate, that maybe we wouldn't have started this conversation as soon if we didn't kind of see that happening within our, you know, budget coming our way. So looking at K-12 routes and, and, you know, what would our families think about that? If we took from having K-five routes and, you know, six, 12 routes separating those from having just K-12 routes, which again, all the other Adams, Wells County schools do that already. We're the only ones that don't. And so I think J County does it as well, right? And so anyway, so just looked at that and I just put some examples. I don't necessarily need, I put this in the public content. Just on the surface, why we would look at this as a possibility. We have a large geographic district, right? So if you have, you know, depending on how many families, and I haven't really broken that down, that might have elementary kids and middle school or high school kids. You know, we're going to that household and coming back, you're going to that household and coming back. So we're doing that four times. So I just took one of our buses that, that does that. And so they're driving about 90 miles a day just for their regular routes. So you'd be cutting that in half, right? You're not doing the, that trip twice. And so you're looking at basically, when you look at three dollars a gallon, again, being conservative with that, three dollars a gallon for diesel, approximately 10 miles a gallon is what your bus is getting. You're basically saving $15 a day. Take that over 180 days, look at $2,600 per year just on that one bus that you'd be saving.
And we run how many buses?
And we run, so we have 16 buses that would have dual routes like that, right? And so I even want more conservatives to say, okay, let's just say 2,000. But you're looking at 32,000 per year just on fuel consumption. That's not even getting into where internal expenses and what might be in maintenance. So I think there's, the point of just going through that little exercise, we'd want to get a little bit more exact underestimates. My point is why are we looking at that? Because there is savings to be had there. And you take that over several years and, you know, you're making up for some of that shortfall that you may have in your operations. So I do want to show you, so did the survey, so put out a survey for our parents and, and staff members. And so I want to show you how many participated. And so we had it open for about a, I think it was about three days, three or four days or within a week. Maybe it's a week. Anyway, put that out there. So we had about 300, over 300 people participate, 235 were parents, 107 staff members, 10 administrators. So it's pretty good participation, honestly. I mean, you don't get, you know, every parent in our school district, you know, participated in polling. So I mean, but it's a pretty good snapshot of kind of what the, the feel of the community would be. And even putting that out, I had several parents just even reach out and say, really excited to contribute, thinking about this. We think this would be really good. So you can see the breakdown in terms of schools, kind of what the participation was from that standpoint. And that would be both parents and staff from those buildings. So when we looked at that, so one of the questions I asked is like, what are, what are some things that are weighing on your mind in terms of what you'd like to see improved by your, your family's experience with transportation? So we listed route duration, how long kids are on the bus, GPS tracking, kind of knowing when your bus is going to arrive. Child, well, child tracking, knowing when your student has gotten on the bus. So you don't have to have that question, they get on the right bus, you can actually see where they checked in. Driver communication, student behavior, stop, stop on violations, students getting dropped off on the left side rather than the right side from a safety standpoint. And then lack of drivers being available for after-school events in the fall and the spring. That's really the tough time. You have a lot of events happening pretty early. The winter events usually are starting late. events happening pretty early. The, the winter events usually are starting later, so it's not as much of an issue. Um, but currently, just on that note, we currently have, during the fall and the spring, we have three drivers that are available to do ECA routes. Um, just because they're not done with their elementary route before they need to get back to the middle school, high school to take off for an ECA, so three. Right? Because they're just not available. If you do K-12 routes, you basically would have, you know, twenty maybe, right? So anyway.
Which I think is, I've said before, we, we.
It's a major problem.
Huge liability when we're asking students to, to get themselves to our events.
So this just shows you kind of where that shook out and they could, they could choose as many of the, if they're all like an issue for them and they want to see improvement, they can choose them all. So what came out ahead, like student behavior currently within our separate routes, like that's just a concern. Like they'd like to see that get better on buses, you know? Um, and then you had route duration, you had being able to track kind of the buses. Those were your top three um, in terms of, um, what would be important, what they'd like to see improved in our transportation system.
So. Okay, stop arms.
Our home is actually lower. Um, I mean, not lower, but being dropped off on the right side, I guess that's the one is lower. Cause most of, most of the time that is where we're dropping off. I mean, there are some kind of roads where that's not possible, but maybe we can do better with that.
Cause that's always, that's always a, something, you know, when you plan the routes, it was something you're cognitive of.
Well, what's better with this routing system that we have now, we can actually put that in and say, well, we're only allowing right side drop-offs and then I don't just.
You know, and then you talk to, and you talk to the parents, you know, we start talking about the drop-offs, get on the right side, and we're talking about bus safety.
Right.
One of the things that people don't understand is there's, you know, how the kids act on the bus and their behavior is, is a, is part of bus safety. You know, if you go back and if you look at some of the accidents, you'll find that it was caused by, um, kids being rowdy, not being quiet when you get to railroad tracks. Someone's talking to the bus driver, they're up there wanting to change the radio. And there's a lot of examples of where you have a distracted driver. And so, behavior is one of the most important things and then a, parents just understanding their kids being a good rider is important to the safety of the bus.
That was one thing that I kind of thought might come out in our, in our survey with this because I think, you know, I think a natural reaction, if you haven't had K-12 routes is worry about the safety thing that my elementary kid's gonna be with a, you know, an eighth grader or freshman, but I think the way to think about that is kind of to your point. Yeah, love elementary kids. I was with them for twelve years solid, just elementary kids, right? And, but they are our most immature, right?
Right.
Right? And so, do you fit seventy-four elementary kids on a bus? Or is it going to be better to have a third elementary kid, it's a third middle school kid? And I spent the rest of my career, the other large portion of my career was in middle school. So I know middle school kids really well too, right? And I'm not saying they're all mature for sure, but, but obviously as you move more, there's more maturity and, and actually having that diversity of age. What I've found in districts that have done that, you actually have better behavior on the buses because you have that diversity of age there. Um, and you do actually end up having older kids looking out for younger kids more often. Um, also another analogy, like if you were to have, you guys said you have seven kids. Would you rather have them all in diapers or would you like them all spread out? Would you rather have them all in kindergarten or have them spread out, right? And so, um, so I think there is a lot of reasoning for that on, on why that could be a benefit too. But just getting to what the parents, so the question was asked, if the change made our routes more efficient, more cost-effective, what would be your level of support, one to five, with five being the highest, being the most supportive of combining elementary and secondary into K-12 routes? And, um, so I was, I was pleasantly surprised just that this can be an option for us because it was pretty positive feedback with people that filled it out. Um, you know, you only had, you know, twelve percent that had it as a level one. I wouldn't support it at all. And only twenty percent that were level one or two. So eighty percent for three or higher. So I think that's positive. Another question I asked was, so currently we have a ninety-minute difference in start times between elementary, and we haven't even like got into start times. Obviously administratively, like we're thinking about what that would look like. But that would be part of the meeting with parents and sitting down and saying, okay, let's look at start times if we were to do this. Um, so there's a ninety-minute difference right now between elementary and middle school. If you did K-12 rights or routes, there would likely be a twenty-minute difference in the end times. Also, obviously end times, start and end times will change somehow. It'd have to. Um, so I just asked, you know, one to five, with five being the most helpful, would that be a helpful thing for your family to not have as wide a gap between your elementary kids and your secondary kids? And that was, again, turned out almost on the same lines, pretty positive. There were one that said, really, that's not that big a deal to us, right? Um, but still quite a few said that, yeah, that'd be really helpful for us as a family to have a more common school day. Um, the next one currently, this is gets in that, what I just said, I have three drivers for fall and spring and Chad's, you know, seeing that upfront, right? Uh, when the ECA routes get canceled. Um, and so Ray, what would be an importance to that for you? And again, that kind of followed the same tread, trend. Um, but that would be very helpful to, to make sure that our kids have ECA, uh, people available. Then when I just asked if you would be, um, willing to have the second part, right, and be a part of the group. Now the time is like five-thirty to six-thirty on weekdays and wasn't shocked by this result, right? But, but I was happy that we did, we did have pretty good turnout. And the goal was to have, we wanted to be more parents than anybody there. And we're not having drivers be there because we're talking, we'll talk about it again tomorrow. We have bus driver meetings almost, almost comes out monthly. And so we have another bus driver meeting, uh, tomorrow and we'll talk about this in that meeting. So I'm getting their input in that meeting. But I really wanted this meeting, if, if we go to this conversation, if we look at it and say, hey, this is a possible efficiency, uh, increase and, and cost reduction. Um, let's get parents together and say, what could this look like? What are some things that we want to put in place? And so I do want that to be heavier on parents. And I think right now as we're looking at it, we'll probably have like twenty, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five parents involved and, um, probably about, uh, twelve or fifteen staff members involved. So that's kind of where we're looking.
So, and then change is gonna be difficult. It's gonna be an adjustment. Um, I, I rode one bus, mine, I mean, we, I, I went to the Cal. We didn't have two pickups. We had one bus. I rode that bus. It was a K-12 all the way through. Um, but, you know, we never had ECA issues. We had an, we actually had an after-school activity bus.
Yeah, right.
You know, I didn't have to worry about transportation after band. I jumped on the bus and it took me home, you know, uh, after those types of things. We don't even have, we couldn't even do that even if we wanted to, because we don't even have enough. You know, when you get the email from the track coach and says, hey, we don't have transportation, you need to take your kid to the event. I, that's a problem. And, and we gotta figure out how to that to not be a problem. And I, and unfortunately, the only way for that not to be a problem is to change the bus schedules.
Yeah, and well, the thing is, is we're talking about the UCA, uh, and you know, the, one of the things about them is, you know, how much are we spending in, in those areas? You know, all the travel, our teams running here and there. We just approved someone going clear to Southern Indiana.
Right.
And we're, you know, you, it's the maintenance, the wear, the fuel. And if we start cutting in other areas.
Right.
That budget's gonna look a little different. Plus, this opens up to the next step. And I don't know if we want to say it, but if, if we have a, we can do this very quickly, we can build our own garage. We can have our own maintenance base. And our own mechanics are, we can maintain our fleet a lot better and our overall cost, the amount we're doing now.
Probably in the savings alone between fuel maintenance and
Yeah.
not buying as many buses or as frequently as we have to.
Right. Well, and I do think that'll be, so, so this is really just mostly on the fuel consumption. I think it's, it's hard to, uh, I mean, logic tells you that the less miles you drive a vehicle, the less maintenance you're gonna have, right? So that's logic. But that's a little bit harder to quantify than you look at miles to gallon and that sort of thing and say, okay, well, if we drive this less miles, we're, we're gonna, we're not gonna consume this much fuel and there's, there's a saving. So that's a little easier one. But yeah, I think standard reasoning would tell you you're gonna, you're gonna spend less on, uh, maintenance as well. But I do think to Todd's point, I think a conversation uh, down the road for us is when we start looking at how do we, how are we more efficient with bus maintenance? We're, we're just simply not right now at all. And a lot of that is in that preventative maintenance part of it. And, um, you know, a lot of districts do the preventative maintenance themselves. And then the bigger diagnostic things, that's what they farm out to, to other, like, you know, like currently we are Family Ford and, and Anderson Chevrolet, that sort of thing. That, that's maybe where you do the, you know, do those. So, anyway. Um, so no, I was, I was, I was pleased by the results because I, you know, I think if it, if it turned out to be something that we really needed to pursue, then there's gonna be a lot more conversation we need to have. And it doesn't seem like that's the case from this anyway.
I, I think, uh, you know, as you get the software up and it'll be interesting to see the efficiency changes that can be made through the K-12. I think that will help through additional conversations. So, is there anything else from the board? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this topic? I know it's, according to this, nobody does, but, um.
They would appreciate it.
Thanks for the, uh, conversation. Do you like to talk more about it?
Nope. All right. Well, the other thing I wanted to point out that, that we've been talking about for a little while, and I just think we're, we're to that point now. Um, we really need to make a decision on this building. And, and as we've kind of seen, um, middle school project unfold and, and really get to look at the, um, spaces that are available there and kind of the needs that the middle school staff has. We have ample space for this office to move, uh, to the middle school. We have, so when you come into the middle school right now, you have the main, the new offices there. Then you have the old offices that are being renovated. And now they've got drywall up there. You can actually peek in. I've been able to walk through it a couple of times now. Um, we could put our, our special education department and Jenny would also be there too. Elijah, she does a lot of coordinating with special ed, so that would make sense. But we could have Jenny in our, in our, um, central, our district special education, um, offices in there. And have plenty of room for that and be a nice space for, for them. And then upstairs, there's an open area that we could do some, um, and again, whether those would be temporary walls or whatever, but for our business departments, it'd be me.
Is that the upstairs where you kind of found the additional space where the?
Yes. So when you come, so to kind of visualize it, when you go in the pool entrance, go up that elevator, go up the stairs, you have those three classrooms on the corner. And that would be actually where we put our alternative school that's here now would be in those spaces. And then the lockers have all been taken out. So that's kind of an open foyer there. If you go then to the right, there's a big, huge, um, open space there. It's an enclosed room that we, we would divide up and that would actually be our offices. So you, you could fit comfortably, I think, and built those rooms yet, but, um, but you could have me and, uh, um, Deb, Courtney, Linda, and then uh, room for an accounts payable person, that sort of thing. We could, we could have room for that.
This is a long-term fit?
I mean, I think it could be honestly. Um, yeah, I think it could be.
Cause you know, one day for then in two years, say, we don't fit this space.
Yeah, no, we fit, no, we fit the space. I mean, I, you know, you never know kind of how things evolve over the next. But I think, that's what I think we've been waiting on and that's internal conversations we've had here. Could we be there long-term? And I think we could. Especially like the special education, actually really the more, and we haven't, you haven't actually, we haven't walked.
Snuck in there at the champions together.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't walked through it together. We've talked about doing that. But honestly, like I think that could actually end up being a really, really good thing uh, for special education. And I think it'd be, could have been a really good thing for us too. As much as we love running over to Austin Elementary every now and then, it's harder to get to the other places. And being there, you've got, you have, you've got your two schools you can be, go to a lot. And then you're, then when you leave the building, you're, you're conservative effort, you're gonna go to Austin or you're gonna go Lancaster. And it's not that big of a difference going either way. Right? And so I think, I think that gets us out a little bit more too, which I think would be positive.
So what, so what are you asking this to be on the, so so everybody kind of understands?
So right now, I just want you to be aware that that's something that, that we're really kind of leaning towards.
Moving this office to the high school location at the middle school and then doing some.
Then we would, then we would sell this. And so eventually like an action item you would have to have really isn't like an action item for us to move there. I mean, we just moved there, right? But I, but I think the action item would be officially saying, you know, we're selling this building, putting it up there and, and being. And I think also if we empty this building, I think it's a better chance to sell. Maybe, I mean, you wouldn't have warned me on that, but.
Do we, person, do we need to, we, so for the new one, we had, uh, the two appraisals done for this building.
Yeah.
Two years ago?
Maybe three.
Maybe three.
No.
Was it two?
Cause you was on.
You were here, okay.
So, would, I don't know how long those are good and should we update those before we?
Yeah, and I think on that, I'll have to go back and look. I'll, I'll go back to my notes on, but I think on selling a building, like we just, we can't buy a building for more than it's worth. So like when we were buying.
Right, but I don't want to sell it for less.
No, no, I get that, I get that. But, but like that's really the appraisal part is that just when we're going to buy, we can't pay, we can't use tax dollars to pay way more. And you can figure how that, how the, the correction could happen to that, right? You pay way over what the value is of something. Uh, so, so we're not allowed to do that. But we could, we could technically sell for, for less of it, but we would don't have to, right? We can say this is our, and it, and if it's empty, that's a little bit more of a time we say, like, we'll just leave it empty.
It's, it's, since this is technically not a building for educational purposes, do we have to offer it to a, another school, uh, private school or any of that? Cause I know schools would do it for a dollar, right? We have to have a period of
Right.
a certain amount of time.
No, I think here, because this is, this is an office and, I mean, even though we use it for alternative, well, I mean, it's, it's, it's an office. And so, yeah, no, we would have.
So really, it's coming. The decision to officially say a district sale is a, a decision in the future?
Yeah, I, I, I would say probably our next meeting. I just wanted to kind of say this out loud, say this is kind of our intention and see what your reactions were to that. I mean, I think we, we're not gonna like build a building with the utility money we save here, right? The utility cost. But here are talking several thousand dollars in, in savings and this isn't, you know, it's not like it's a totally inefficient building, but it's not.
Could we? I think before we can, are, are you, can we see what your layout plan would look like?
Yeah.
That also includes a future, you know, uh, transportation director? I mean, I want to make sure that the central office isn't setting itself up for the staff today, that it sets itself up for its ability, ability to grow in staff.
Yeah, so I, so one of the things that we've done in, Byron's a proud resident of the Blue Ops building over there. And so we have, our technology is really kind of in that and our maintenance staff are in that Blue Ops building. But if we were to do, like down the road, if we, if it was feasible and it made sense and we saw how maintenance costs would maybe pay for a transportation building, then I think it probably would, but I think we'd want to talk about that more. That's where you'd have, you could put some of those operational offices could be in that space as well. Again, don't have to be elaborate. We just need to, and even like our offices don't need to be elaborate, right? Be nice enough as a bucket.
If you have to have now three doors.
Easy access.
Right, so, but we don't, but we don't need that, right? We need, in fact, I don't want that. I mean, we need, we need functional office spaces. We don't, we don't need, we don't need.
We just want to make sure that we are not setting ourselves up for, hey, we don't have enough space. We are going to need to.
Yeah, right. I don't think so because in that, so in that space, but in that space, oh, that's easy. Um, in the, like, so the upstairs we're talking about, for, for, for special education, there's plenty of room in that space. Um, because we're not looking, I mean, there's, there would be no need. Cause we even have space in there that if we wanted to have like our, uh, special education coach and some of our itinerants, we, we would have space to do that. So that, that I don't, there's, there's not a need to increase staffing in special education. That wouldn't make any sense. And for our office, the only thing that I, that you could see, um, especially as Deb starts thinking about her, you know, timely exit, right, Deb? So.
I thought we just.
Yeah, right, we're not like that. But no, as we do that, I mean, you could, so like we have accounts payable, um, is a, is a position that we don't have right now that I think that is, that there's space for that. And then potentially you could have, depending on how much we keep doing with HR, which has been really good. You could have just a payroll clerk. That wouldn't necessarily have to be full-time. That could be a part-time. But there would be an office for that if you did that. So you would have an office for, um, currently we'd have an office for Deb, accounts payable and a payroll, payroll clerk. And it might not look like that. So, so that's a long-winded answer of saying, I think we're fine.
Okay, so, so I guess what I would like to see, the rest of you can chime in if you would like, uh, what the build-out would be and what the cost to do, do the build-out.
Right.
Before we make that decision.
Would you guys, would you be interested in the next, in the April? Um, well, I guess we were looking at April twenty-second. Um, being when, what's that? Well, April twenty-second, we're looking at, um, having Yagan do a presentation just on the update. And we weren't going to necessarily go out to the building on that. But we could on either the eighth, I guess where I'm going on this. Would you want to meet out there, have a change of the location of the meeting to the middle school? And then you could walk, we could take some time to walk around the offices I'm talking about. And as obvious, as, as I was answering my last question, or your last question, I actually was thinking about there's, there's additional spaces upstairs that we actually could, could expand and have more office spaces up there. So there, it's really that, and we're not looking, we don't, I mean, it's not that we don't need it, it was extra space in there and some of it we were just kind of mothballing and just finishing, you know, just a footwell, but we weren't finishing, finishing it, like we weren't putting the new flooring down, we weren't doing that stuff. So I think for relatively inexpensively, we could cut a lot more office spaces and things upstairs if we needed that. So, so a very long-winded is that we're not going out there, I'm sorry about that.
Well, I think, again, go, I'd like to see what the, the actual final build-out would look like and then the estimate.
And then the cost could vary, whether or not we're just going to do, uh, partitions type things up there or we're actually going to build trouble.
I think once you get into the designing and figuring out, you know, who has offices, who adds, doesn't need an office and so on and so forth, then where's, where's the funding coming from?
It is going to be our normal construction crew, so that's. We'll, we'll see. There, we'll probably pay them the same fee we did before.
I hope Adam's listening.
We are, we're out growing the alternative school back here. So they're, they're coming in every day to the board room to have, um, breakout classes. So, um, and which is good, we're having a great success rate back there. So there's my head thinking about that and I, I, we want our office right across from where the kids are going to be, um, just so we can be right there.
I know we talked about though, the, the success sometimes comes from the fact that they're off the campus.
Right, right.
And then of course that doesn't, they wouldn't be off the campus and so just.
But they kind of.
They're mostly.
They kind of would be, because they kind of just go up that little place.